Started with the very first.
Thought I'd go to you this morning. We're mindful and thankful for our country and the freedoms we enjoy. We're thankful for those that keep us safe, so through state reserve, and those that have special responsibilities to watch over them and keep them safe. Today we have business of the county in the privilege and direction as we make those decisions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Kevin's away with some family issues, so Mike and I are going to handle it today, hopefully. First, on the business, the minutes, they send the email, any alterations or corrections? No, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I will second that, all in favor, aye? Two zero. Okay, payroll number eight, calendar year 2021, totals $248,877.98. We had 177 claims totaling $397,479.61. Entertainer motion for the financials.
So moved.
In favor, aye?
Aye.
Two zero. Okay. Sheriff Holliday, Scott.
You're welcome. Up first. Morning.
See, let me see, Diana, Marley, sorry. Okay.
As of this morning, I have 75 inmates in jail, 25 of those are pretrial Superior, 24 are pretrial Circuit, 12 F6, and 7 DOC. I don't have anything else necessarily to report, other than just kind of give you guys a heads up. As the Commissioners, Amoresco has got some site bids scheduled for Friday at the jail for different contractors for different quotes for the rental stuff.
Okay.
So, so that they can actually get numbers for the HVAC stuff, the roof stuff.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, so that, just so you guys are aware, that's going on Friday. So they'll be out there then, know that there's any need for you guys to be there or not, but I just want to give you a heads up that you should be there.
Appreciate that.
Other than that, I don't have anything else to report. If you've got any questions.
Okay.
I don't.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Okay. Nate, you had something with the bids for our... Remember you wrote it down, and I think I wrote it down incorrectly. I had a question, Lisa, and she corrected me. She had to go back on the tape.
Yes, the 2021 bituminous materials bid, liquid bid, is for our emulsion for our chip seal program. The low bid was provided by Asphalt Materials. Their typical oil would be a $1.459, so it's a fractional cent there. I'm recommending, accepting of all the bids with the intent that we'd be using asphalt materials for the bulk of our bid. You had that. I do have a little update from the Highway Department as far as what our status was on a few activities. Look at what I was sent here. All right. Stone hauling for our gravel roads is done at this point, so I get all, we've got all our townships completed. We've got a ditching equipment out running the county right now. They're starting a backhoe crew today, actually, and the dirt patcher and the patching crew are out patching now. It's my understanding we've got some snow on the way. Hopefully, that's fairly limited. It certainly won't last very long, but it'll certainly be a bit of a blast for everybody, so be safe out there. But, yeah, we're aware of it, and it's certainly not convenient for anybody, since I think we were prepared for our summer work at this point. We're getting prepared for it.
Excellent.
So, nope. Yes, I need a motion for that.
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Two zero.
All right. Other items I have here under my report, just, I'll be working on some NDOT quarterly reports. Usually they're due the end of April for the January through March. Actually, I haven't got a reminder for that yet from NDOT, so I think they're moving to a new bit of software for our portal. So I think something's kind of fallen through the cracks, so hopefully tomorrow I'll be able to work on that.
That DocuSign document, once I sign it, do you get it?
I end up, I don't actually get that automatically. It ends up going back to NDOT. I have seen the email for the one that you signed, that was for the...
I just want to make sure, I mean, all they, all they do is give me a DES number or whatever number, and I'm supposed to know what that means.
Yeah, so what you're doing right now, when you see that, typically I'll...
Question it to you, and then you give me...
Send it to me, and then we'll double check it, and I'll copy at least on some of the communications, so that you're not kind of... The system's meant to be fast, and it is fast, because it's quick. Usually it was two to three months to get a contract signed. It's two or three days now with a DocuSign. So there, it's certainly faster, but it feels breakneck pace for NDOT to send something that quickly. Certainly, we've asked questions to NDOT, and I won't say they haven't sent us contracts to sign that aren't ours yet, but that we've seen some things come through that they've sent and then immediately revoked, so they're getting used to the new system as well.
Okay. Didn't what you, what you copied Commissioners on, the NDOT contract called for them to get a copy of the resolution authorizing the signatures?
Correct.
Do they already have that, or is that something you have to send besides the DocuSign?
We had sent that with the first one, so once that was done, then any contracts with NDOT, so they were looking for that resolution, and we had sent that to them as soon as I got the pass. So, no, so now it's, it's much faster that way, and we just need to make sure we get the motions internally done appropriately, because if I tell them they're ready, they'll send the documents even though we haven't necessarily approved them, so. No, and that was for the right-of-way services on Bridge 106. That's the one we're talking about right now, so I guess if anybody's got questions. No, but yeah, quarterly reports, I'll be working on those here the next day or two. We've already hit the by-two-minute bids that were on my list, so that's great. Just a little update, County Road 100 South, that was part of the unofficial detour for the bridge project that NDOT did last summer and fall.
500, 600 West?
Yep, 6 West, all the way to 3 West. So I was out there with Kim last week looking at that. We are looking at doing about 1,000 feet of full-depth repair. So we're going to take the road out, put in about a foot, foot and a half of new aggregate, and then we're going to chip seal that road this year, so we're going to do that full-depth patching. That's something Kim and I think will be trying to put into the budget regularly, that we do about 1,000 feet of road repair like that elsewhere, because we've just got perpetually bad sections, whether the drop of hills in some roads. We're going to try to do that as a preemptive measure on some roads, either the year before the spring of our chip sealing.
Make sure all the drainage is taken care of first.
Well, even just this, try to get the stonework done. I mean, it's easy enough to put a bulk item for road repair, but if you're earmarking 1,000 feet, that's a very measurable goal to try to hit, and then you can go out there with a wheel, and you may not get everything, but you've got 1,000 feet, you're not going to have to dirt patch the next year. So try to just move us in the right direction. It's, it's a one step to take, and it's easy enough. And in talking to Kim, it's something they'd done in the past. It just kind of fell off the radar years ago, so that was our, our first step in that direction. Update on small structure replacements. We've ordered our small structures for this year. Plan on replacing eight small structures between the span of 3 feet and 18 feet in the county. This is certainly fewer than what we've done in the past. Problem is, is one structure is about a third of that total budget. So the one I got in Jackson Township, I've been trying to kick around for two or three years. It's, it cannot wait, so we've got to do it. It's a 10-foot by 18-foot concrete box. It's about, about $80,000.
That's a lot.
So, and we're doing it with local forces. I think if I'd done it with NDOT, it'd be about $450,000. So we're doing it at a real discount, but it is a big hit for us this year, and we've got other structures like that that are in that inventory that are eligible really for federal aid. So we essentially have to spread them out, do one a year if we can. So, no, just a little update on that. I do have, I have received the Geotech Report for the Highway Garage, at least the draft. So I've got the boring logs and some of the minor recommendations. I think I emailed that to you individually. I have some of those borings here. I just want to let you know that overall, the borings look very good. Very stiff, or stiff clays in the soils there. There's about a foot of topsoil. The reason they haven't released the full report is they're still pending development of recommendations for the compaction procedures and optimal moisture content. That's a thing that they need to have. We're also looking at just shoring during excavation. So I'm hoping in the next week or two, by the May meeting, you'll have a full report. But really, based on the boring logs that I saw, there's really no red flags for, as far as foundation concerns.
I looked at it too.
So.
Jumps out, so.
So, no, that's all very good, so I think that you'd be in a very good position to, to move forward on acquisition of the land if you felt that that was the time, or if you wanted to wait for the formal complete report. Moving on from that, I do have a meeting with our QAW. There were some schedule conflicts, otherwise we would have met since our last meeting. It was our intent, but we are meeting later this week for a kickoff on the design. I've had some phone conference calls and some teams meetings with them already in between to get them a head start before that kickoff meeting, so they shouldn't be coming into that completely green. Something that's not on my notes here, but I added it afterwards, is that the Bridge 121, that community crossings project north of Toxen, the money for that should be being deposited by the state here in the next couple of weeks, so that agreement was approved, and so that should be getting ready to go. I do not have a start date set with RG Zachrich at this point, but that should be coming, hopefully later this year, so.
Any rightaways?
I didn't receive any. We got three three-replanting, so three rightaways recommending approval.
Motion for that.
Yep.
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, uh, two zero.
All right. Any other questions for me?
Not right now.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are going to jump Marlene up to the desk.
Monday is our clinic days. Monday and Wednesdays is our clinic days out at the 4H Park, and we had to tear everything down on Wednesday night, so this morning we had to set everything up, and then we have sick people, so let me fill you in just a little bit. I'm not sure what all you're wanting to know. As I said, our vaccine clinic runs Monday and Wednesday from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We run about 10 to 12 people through every 10 minutes, so today we had 425 scheduled. And because we have more vaccine to give than that 425, we did send out notifications, some of you may have received those yesterday, that we'll take walk-ins today and no appointment necessary. So this morning, there was a line out the door by 8:20 or 8:30, so it's going to be a busy place, most certainly. The need for the vaccine definitely exists, and we was hoping to do away with the appointments to, to be able to accommodate more people, so hopefully this weather coming in on Wednesday won't affect that, because, you know, there's, there's been several hiccups along the way. As you know, we now have three vaccines available. We are only giving the Moderna out at the clinic. That is for 18 and over. There's a lot of confusion with that, because the Pfizer vaccine can be given to those 16 and over. The Johnson &amp; Johnson, of course, is a one-shot deal. As you probably also know, that has been put on pause right now. Supposedly this week, they're going to probably release that. We did have a limited amount of the Johnson &amp; Johnson, and we did administer that to some homebound and to, at the jail, knowing that it was a one-time deal and we could move on, but nothing since that's been put on pause, obviously. We are working with the schools. Some of you might know that information as well. As of last week, we were able to order the Pfizer vaccine, and we're working with the schools to see what the need would be there, and we would give it to those 16 and above there. Of course, that would be with parent consent. We're just trying to see right now what the, the need is and how many would be willing to do that before we would order any of that Pfizer vaccine. So that's kind of there in a nutshell. Some numbers. As of last Friday, 13,438 doses have been administered to Wells County residents. There's 7,798 first doses and 5,333 second doses. So that leaves 5,640 people that are fully vaccinated at this point, so we've not hit the halfway mark yet with Wells County, yet.
That was my question. What's our percentage currently? Where, so that helps me out a little.
You don't have to, you know, we're not restricted to Wells County residents, so we get people from Huntington and Allen. We've had it as far away as Grant County and Jay County, so it's really the availability of the appointments. Early on, we didn't have the vaccine here to give to a lot of people, so they went to Decatur and, and Fort Wayne. And then Fort Wayne really got inundated, and so we, we get a lot of Allen County, Fort Wayne people to come this way, so. There's been 307 single doses, so that was the amount of Johnson &amp; Johnson. Walgreens and Walmart is now administering the vaccines as well. I think that's, I can't speak to how many appointments or how much they have. I know at one point, there was a break in the Walgreens, or in the Walmart availability, but I really don't know where we're at with that now. Interesting enough, fellas, 57.3% is females getting vaccinated. Only 42% of the males here in Wells County are getting vaccinated. And the age group most vaccinated is the 65 to 69-year-olds, so the next is the 80-plus. We had very good exposure there with the 80-plus, and then they opened it up, of course, you know, down to 18 and above for now, so.
Super.
Yep. The test site remains open out at the Nazarene Church. That, the testing is not as needed as what it once was. I mean, we kind of have highs and lows here. A few weeks ago, it was very busy, and we had lots of positives come from that. As you well know, we went back up to orange for a couple of weeks, but we're back to yellow now, and hopefully we'll stay there, and maybe even be able to move on to blue, so that's our hope anyway. Both, we have two persons, actually three persons, that mans the vaccine clinic, or the test clinic. It runs Tuesday through Friday from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., and on Saturdays, 8:00 to 2:00. We ran it all winter long as a drive-through clinic, and so kudos to the, the gals that are running that out there, and through that cold and through the snow and the rain and everything else. That site has been terrific, and we thank the Nazarene Church for allowing us to stay there this long and be able to operate the, the test site. As well, the vaccine clinic, as you know, it's ran by both health department personnel, a few people that we've been able to employ through the grant that we have for the COVID vaccine, and then we have some volunteers that are very dedicated, and I appreciate those volunteers. Today was one of those hiccups where we've got one sick, and three or four had other plans and couldn't come in, so we're very shorthanded today. So we're, we're kind of scrambling, but, so that's kind of us in a nutshell at this point.
That's fantastic. Thank you for all this information.
You're welcome.
Everybody, go ahead, Mike.
How many cases have we had in Wells County since the onset of this?
Oh, my goodness. I think that's somewhere around 2,700, and don't quote me on that. I didn't look up that information.
How many new cases do we have as of today, maybe from a week ago?
I haven't seen a report.
Yesterday said four and 24, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think.
Four positive out of 24 tested.
Yes, yeah, so it's dwindling, and again, some reports don't make it to us until a week or two later, so.
Yeah, and sometimes it'll be five out of 12, or something, you know, just, just all over the board, so. But this is very beneficial. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your hard work.
Well, thank you.
Can work with these numbers too.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it. Okay, Michael, we have you next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a unique situation where we have three different rezoning requests that received unanimous due-pass recommendations, which we need your approval today, if you're so willing to do so. So I got to go through them in order with you to introduce them, and we can go one at a time.
Let's go one at a time. There, there's a couple I had questions on, so.
Yeah, so the first one is a property owned by Bill's Roofing. It's on a corner of US 224 and 300 West, northwest corner. They're looking at rezoning a portion of that property, the southern portion of the property for potential commercial sites. At the meeting, the Plank Commission and a concerned citizen brought up some questions about drainage on the property, and interest or question about whether or not a septic system could be located there. The Plank Commission felt that those were more development plan and construction questions, and not based on rezoning. The rezoning matches the zoning across the street. The northeast corner is also zone industrial one, as this request is. So it'd be consistent with that area. We know that those will need to be addressed before, before the development plan would be approved and permits would be issued for the site.
The remaining acreage, is it one parcel or two parcels?
Right, that's three total parcels, so two parcels would not be zoned industrial one.
And what are they currently, A or S?
They're A, they're A1.
A's.
Yep.
Okay. With the property to the north that you're not rezoning is going to be subdivided into three?
Two pieces, yeah, so three pieces in total, two acre tracts in the southern portion, so that was there.
How far is the municipal sewer from Union Hill located?
It's...
The whole mile?
Yeah, it's a whole mile, but it is an option. That was something that was kicked out in pre-discussions, that if septic didn't work on-site, that is a possibility. Or to do a, or do an off-site system on another property. One of those two things will be possible.
Across the street currently, the I-1 zoning isn't being used for that purpose?
Yes, yep, so right across the street, yeah.
It's like a trucking hub or something, transfer.
You definitely have a light in this room, yes.
Make a motion, no, I'd make a motion to approve that.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Two zero.
All right, what's the order, the subject of that one? All right, the next one is property owned, you know, between two parties right now, as it's getting swapped. So J&amp;D Real Estate Ventures and Jaden Intundy Rousch. This is the northeast corner of the recent estate that's part of the city, major subdivision petition. So it'd be located on County Road 200 North, east of Stairway 1. It would be directly east of the old Alaparn location on that property. They're looking at zoning the property from residential two to suburban one. That would allow them to have a recreational pond. They're looking at that property being divided into three different pieces, two residential properties, and then one with a, with a pond. For more of a suburban-type residential involved.
Will that parcel be included in annexation request, or is it going to stay outside?
It is not part of, so if they would be annexed, they would make their own request, not, not jointly with the other piece.
And would each parcel be required if there's a request? All parcels need to be requested to be in the city, or can one, two, or three of the parcels be stayed?
Have to be done. So that's a question that will be come up one day. There was already a better prediscussion about municipal sewer for the service of the two homes that are planned, so that would be in that discussion about annexation and receiving the services.
And my last question I had with Jerry, but he's gone, was the drainage, so there's a tile that comes under the road in front of that woods. Is the plan for that water to go west through the property into the pond or into the subdivision's drainage system?
That will go through the subdivision's drainage system. That ditch is on, is on the J&amp;D Ventures side of the property line.
Okay.
That was one of the off-site stormwater items that was discussed during that subdivision.
Do you have any other questions?
I do not.
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Two zero.
Okay. The final piece, or final rezoning request is a couple of properties in the Toxen area on US 224. Greer is holding LLC, and Dennis and Jim Greer are petitioning. They have the well-done shop in the corner there, 600 and 224, and then a corresponding parking area across the platted alleyway. Those, looking at zoning those properties to industrial one, which would make it a permitted use for the continuation of the welling shop there, instead of operating under a variance or a BZA petition when it was originally established, and then would make that building more palable for future uses, as well as having that zone in the parking area established there, so. That is that petition.
Questions on this one?
I don't either.
It's been used that way for a long time.
Motion, yeah.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Two zero.
Great. I'll pass the papers around for, for signatures, and we'll read them.
Excellent. Thank you, Michael.
Yep.
The form says you've got attached the proof of publication.
Yes, we have that.
That's what was initially sent.
That was on... We did more.
Check mark of the eyes. I saw those, but what was published is just the briefly. It doesn't have a complete legal?
So the publica... Yeah, so the publication notice, the legal description will be the D.
Okay, but the form saying for a legal says see attached and then includes the publication notice. Like, that's why it's attached to show the legal description?
Yeah, so there will be two things attached, the D and the notice.
But the legal notice is like the tax sale.
There you go.
Correct. Yeah.
Nothing as far as really... Thanks, Michael.
Any other questions for me?
Not at this time.
No, sir. Thank you.
Up, Dan. Dick. Brett, I believe. Yeah. Not Ben, but Ben's boy.
Mike, nice to meet you, Dan.
I'm well.
Sure, how are you? Yeah, all right. You kind of match, yeah.
All right, so what we're discussing is the May 1 renewal. The work comp renewed on 2/1. I sent a brief email out last week, so you would kind of have a standing of where we're at, because this is a lot of information to go over in just a few minutes. If you pull out the proposal, it compares to kind of what we were discussing. I'm going to hit on some of the key points. If you guys have questions on anything else, please don't, please stop and ask. There are a number of, you know, auto claims that we've seen over the last couple of years. We'd like to see that start going down so we can get the premiums more favorable. There's also some pending other legal issues in a couple of situations in the jail. So we have a list of losses that you guys can see and review if you'd like. One of the bigger items, I think, is the value, replacement value of the courthouse. These carriers are getting very, very picky on making sure we have buildings insured to value. And we have the courthouse insured at around $8 million, $96,000. They're wanting to bump it up and it's a historical building built pre-1900. I had been working with Lisa for weeks on the valuation. They originally wanted over $15 million. I got information her, we were going back and forth.
Right.
We've been trying to negotiate.
Talking square footage and everything else.
And we've been trying to... I've been working with Lisa for weeks before this with all the vehicle schedules, all the pre-apps that we have to do in order to even have this prepared. And Lisa has been wonderful. She's been a great assistant in getting some of this stuff prepared. So I want to give her... She's been amazing and has been all the years I've been working with her. I'm sure Nick would second that. So all in all, I mean, you see we're up around eight, almost nine percent in premium. A good majority of that is because of the value of the courthouse on the property and then the pending losses with Bliss. I do want to make a comment too on the cyber and the data coverage. That is, those premiums are increasing significantly because of the amount of occurrences that the municipality businesses are having. The claims are significant. This is through, it says CHUB, but it's through Bliss, which is who we have the other multi-class liability with. So that is through Bliss. And, you know, I negotiated trying to get that down. They almost didn't even issue a renewal because of the concern over the amount of cyber and data breach that's going on right now. So I don't know if you, I presented it, we've got it tagged here by the carriers where you can go through and you can look at the coverages. I'm going to have to go over the in-the-marine schedule with Lisa in more detail as we get, you know, the final information. There may be some changes here and there by taking off some equipment, looking at, you know, making sure the property's vehicles are all consistent, because not always are they always correct. So, I mean, this could change a little bit. I don't... Dick, do you have any of this... Since you've worked with the account for years.
Number one, we've had 19 significant claims or claims filed alleging wrongdoing under the Bliss policies. This is a liability, suicides at the jail, closing the businesses and so forth. So that's somewhat excessive, but of course with the times, anything is not unrealistic. Now, a lot of times the claim will be dismissed, but we've got to consider for the example of $200 or $300 of legal fees and administrative fees to get those dismissed and to ongoing issues within that particular alleged wrongful act. Now, the selective portions of the policy, which is the property and the crime, we've had zero activities in that. We've had zero activities in that. So unfortunately, we fight with the insurance industries on a year-to-year basis, but they have increased the deductibles to 2500 to 5,000. Again, that would have not cost us any extra the past year. And accordingly, we like to give the insurance companies a benefit of the doubt on a lot of these issues. And again, the cyber liability is becoming a highly contested type of coverage for municipalities. So unfortunately, we're up about $18,000 premium or approximately nine percent. We insure several municipalities and we are on top of these markets, so we do check and make optional inquiries into other companies. I recollect of a situation several years ago when we did not have the account that two days before expiration, it was presented, "By the way, you've got coverage, but you've got a $25,000 already deducted on property." "Oh, by the way, you've had $5 million of the liability, but that'll be $4 million from now on." That's what instigated the change back in, I think, 2004 or '05. I can't recall exactly when that was. Indiana Code says that a municipality is liable for up to $5 million. That does not, the federal government does not have a limit on that, but we do have $5 million occurrence limits on the policy. Other than that, the significant changes that we see are historical. This is in the number of years that we've taken care of the count. This is the most significant increase that we've seen in premiums. And if you have any specific questions, you can go through this. It'll kick in on 5/1. There'll be some additional documents. And like Dan says, we're going to continue to work with Lisa on certain amounts of coverage here. But a lot of times it's a thousand vessels that these companies provide. The state of Indiana has said abandoned cemeteries now become the authority of the local government. We've had front two fields. And then the insurance company says, "Well, by the way, do you have an address?" Well, how many times do you send post cars to deceased relatives in the middle of a cornfield in southern Indiana or southern Wells? So basically, we've got to look at that too, that the additional coverage that's provided by these companies are not all uniform.
Well, and we don't get the rate. I think people think that we get these rates and we're holding for months before we forward this. And that is not the case. A lot of these people are working from home. And we're sending emails asking for response. I know in the work comp situation, it was almost a week before I even got a reply back and I had to ask three times. And I felt bad about that situation because that isn't typically how I do business. And, but we're waiting and waiting to get these numbers because I know you guys don't want them last minute. And we're also working on this months before the renewal. And Lisa can attest to it because we've been looking over the vehicle schedules, doing all the pre-app requirements. And there's a lot of work that goes into it. But if we don't have everyone replying, it's hard to be able to get this to you 30 days before. It's almost impossible on an account this large.
Dan, just one question. Did we have any claims through cyber?
No, no, there's been, no.
So it's in the industry, not us individually?
Right.
Because I was trying to, when I got the email, I tried to look at that and I didn't see anything. So I just want to make sure.
Right.
We didn't have any.
And what I'm being told is when they do have a claim, it's not a $10,000 claim. It's significant.
Yeah, six figure, maybe.
And I think what these carriers are doing is, I don't, some of these insurance, they're always wanting to get the money back when they see their expenses. It's like any business, they have to. But I don't like to see it increase like that. But I do know that every account I'm working with, we're discussing, I know this, we discussed this, Roy brought it up, and that's why you have it, is because he had mentioned it being a big concern.
You've got, from the election board standpoint, last year, the Secretary of State says we're going to give to all counties the cyber coverage or whatever. Okay, fine, no cost with county, great. And then they get hacked by the Russians, so.
I mean, I'm just, my own, I have to, my emails, everything. I mean, anybody that's in business, they're going after everything. And when they, they're sitting at home just clocking into your stuff, trying to figure out, I've got clients who, they're looking at him typing in his bank numbers and just waiting to go after that. So, I mean, it's a scary situation.
Seven years ago in our office, our computers were locked up and we got a text that said, "Hey, $10,000 for this account."
Ransome where?
Who opened everything up for you again? Well, we went to our IT people and for $700 we got it back. But they wanted $10,000. Whoever managed to lock everything up. So we're just a small operation compared to a county government or a municipality deal.
I think it's very smart to have the coverage in place, but it's going to be expensive to have it. And if there is ever a situation, it's usually going to be significant. We're talking hundreds of thousands.
But looking at everything, the percentage just in the cyber line by itself makes up about a third of the number. So I have no issue with what we've got going on. Unless you have any further comments or questions.
Does the cyber security insurance company, do they offer any sort of benefit for a more robust or substantial security protocol on our end? We had to complete all the applications that were, they were asking for all the backup and all of that. I mean, I can send you the applications that have been completed. But, I mean, so, I mean, what, I won't know exactly what you guys have in place other than what's being put on the application, who's completing that. I've got a...
That was my question with Roger. And if we've been hacked, how we've... They've tried to do it and if we've been breached, no, we haven't. That's why I wanted to verify that.
But if there's any questions, we can, I can reach out. I mean, if you have, if you want to know exactly like certain protocol, I mean, if you email me, I can get you in touch with whoever you need to speak to in order. And it is a fairly new coverage, so I can't say you're an answer all the details about it because it's fairly new, but it's, I mean, it's happening everywhere.
Sure.
And any business, I'd recommend you have some sort of data or cyber coverage.
And anytime you think of a way to get around them, they find a way to get around you.
And it's so upsetting because you're running a business, working hard, and then people are just coming in and taking your information. And it's not good. It's a very frustrating feeling for a...
Yeah, I have no issue.
So the only thing we would need is just a request to find coverage and then there would be a statement of values and other than that to sign, which we will get put together. And that's really all we need. And I believe you guys pay quarterly, so that's how we bill on this portion of the account. So that would be the only thing we need and...
Wouldn't it save us money to pay a semi annually? Is there a discount?
No, it's not. Yeah, so, I mean, it's up to you. We can change how you are billed. If you want to pay annually or semi, it would be easier on us because we have to set up all the billing because they bill us and then we bill you. And so, I mean, it's whatever works for you guys. But currently, we pay, you guys are paying quarterly.
Is that in a form of a motion? You'll accept this?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for that.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Two, zero. There you go.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work. I appreciate it.
Okay. Do you have additional other business, Lisa?
We have a request for the plaza for the Pro City Market. It's held every Saturday morning from 9:00 to 1:00, May through October.
Make a motion to approve this.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Two, zero.
Today is the last day for Vermont Strips to be filed for the Kim Cat Farm.
Kim Cat Farm?
Yeah, I know that.
Yep. I will file all that paperwork today.
Right, you've got the certificate.
I do.
And you mail that to DLFG. I take it?
Yes, I can just email to Brad and George.
And you've got the proof of publications to record with that.
Excellent.
So the only thing is Highway Garage and County Farm discussions.
Well, Nate touched on it. Go ahead.
I do have one. Where's... Lofton Mall, or no, Wow?
Yes, she emailed me and...
Forms.
And wanted me to stop by and sign it.
She did want you to stop by?
Yes. I, well, I'll put it this way. I offered to stop by.
Okay, I can leave it up if you want to sign it here, but that's okay.
However, I mean, I could, I could sign it and take it with me as long as she gets it back to you or something. Did you have any issues or the numbers on that contract?
No, I'm good.
Make that.
Yep.
Which motion? Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Two, zero.
That was all I have.
And the Highway Garage Nate spoke of in regards to our QAW's meeting here this week. And Roy, you sent us some information regarding County Farm.
Yeah, do you want to repeat? Because it's a different meeting, what you reported on regarding the soil boring?
Oh. Yeah, the soil boring. So I've received some of the soil boring information from Al Witsick Engineering. He was the geotechnical engineer for kind of the investigation. And overall, the boring logs that I've received are very positive. I really are looking at, very suitable for this sort of foundation that we're talking about putting in, which is the spread footer foundation for any structure. So from that standpoint, we're in very good shape. They actually had all the refusal at one point because of the density of the soils at relatively low, I mean, 25 feet. So that's very good for us. There really was no evidence of any sort of old fill material or just unsuitable soils. So that's all very good for our intended uses for the property. There's about a foot of topsoil, which is pretty typical for front ground. So really no red flags that I saw in the report. Now, it still needs to be complete, so that's all still in draft format. But the boring logs aren't going to change because that's essentially their record investigative material. logs aren't going to change, because that's essentially their record investigative materials.
So with that, if we have the tile we need to move and the drainage swell with the culverts.
Yep.
How quick, I assume that's going to be done with highway personnel?
We could do the culvert under the road, try to get that relocated. Any of the kind of tile replacement that maybe want to be relocated, that could be done, put into the, just transfers within the budget. We would just want to get, I would prefer to get the acquisition of the property as we start to make that sort of investment. Certainly, because it's, even though it's a county tile, it would be more surveyor's responsibility, but if we're doing this more as a highway garage project, then I would feel better knowing that this was going to be the future home of the highway department.
Right.
Before we start committing highway personnel's time.
Sure, absolutely. But to have things lined up.
Yeah, we're, we're doing backhoe notes right now, so really what this would become is a very big backhoe note, essentially, but that's something that could be done. And we would definitely want to notify the seller. I think they're looking at putting crops on portions of that field, so if we want to do that, we want to stake out where we're going to be doing work, so that we don't incur crop damages. I think they would want to try to take the crops from that field before we do anything major, so.
Right, right.
So we want to notify them as soon as possible. So if you're at the position where you want to try to move forward on that, then certainly I can notify them.
So where we are is we have a six-month option.
Correct.
And that runs from maybe December 28, after Mossberg signed the option agreement.
I believe so.
So you've got basically two months left. If the soil borings are, if you're recommending to the commissioners that we proceed to acquire the property, then we would need to give them notice and.
Correct.
Get a title commitment and whatever we need to do to purchase the property.
Again, that's two months earlier than maybe the extension or the option allows. The only benefit is, is that it'll allow us to not incur any sort of crop damages, because they won't try to use the field in the meantime, so.
Right.
Well, plus, I don't think we want to, I don't think the county wants to spend money on tiling property you don't own yet.
Well, exactly.
Correct.
Doing the proper steps.
Yep, so if that's the direction we want to go and move forward with it, it seems like now would be the time to do that, unless there's reasons, based on the investigation that's been done, though it is still draft. Some confidence that we're not going to see anything surprises.
We'll have the official paperwork first meeting made, correct?
Yeah.
Kev will be back, let's make it at that meeting, if that's okay.
Okay.
Plan on making it at that, unless we have something unforeseen coming.
Sure.
If we made progress on that right away that we spoke about there.
Yes. And in the county farm, you had a couple things that you sent us.
The county farm, I told you that I outlined the steps for.
Yes.
Selling the county farm, so I outlined those steps for you. First step would be for the commissioners to approve the sale. You're not approving the sale to a specific individual, but approve of the county disposing of the county farm. And that would need to be advertised for a hearing. So my suggestion would be.
What's the delay after the hearing before you make the decision at the hearing?
You make the decision at the hearing.
Okay.
And at the hearing, then, when you decide that you're in favor of disposing of it, that's when you would choose the appraisers. It needs to be appraised by, two appraisers that have to be professionally engaged in making appraisals and licensed under 2534-1. So that would be, the first step is to make a decision to sell it, advertise notice, have the hearing, and then appoint the appraisers. Then when the appraisers come back, then you need to establish a minimum price. What's different from the time when you sold the portion of the county farm east of County Home Road is that you may want to consider employing an auctioneer. But from my reading of the statute and rereading it, that would be an additional step, not in lieu of the notice, so you'd have to give notice plus.
So we have to allow a little extra time also.
Well, I think the auction could take place at the time that you say the sale's going to occur. It's just that at that time, on the day of sale, you have an auctioneer to conduct an auction sale. You still have the bids, but you also, on that day, would have an auctioneer employed to conduct an auction.
I don't want to make that decision today, but.
No, no.
It, I think that's the avenue we need to lean toward, that it might make sense to figure out what sell-offs are left in each parcel, and either sell it as a lump sum or a combination thereof.
Right, well, obviously, that's where the drafting of the notice of sale would be.
Right.
The parcels would be sold in two parcels, and then be sold to either the best price for both combined or separately, whatever produced the most money to the county. But I think those decisions would be made when you, when you get the appraisals back, because you're supposed to set a minimum price. And then you advertise the terms of the sale.
So to, I really don't want to do it without Kevin here.
No, I'm saying, but next meeting.
And then how long till the hearing? The following meeting?
Yes, right. I think you publish, I think, one time in 10 days, so you had enough time between commissioners' meetings. So the next commissioners' meeting, consider adopting a resolution to sell it.
Okay.
Publish the notice at the next meeting, have the hearing, and then appoint, you know, the appraisers. And then when you get the appraisals back, then you, then you set minimum prices and agree upon the terms of the sale that you need to publish. And then finally, when all, after all this happens, since it, since it sells, presumably is going to sell for more than $50,000, then the sale is subject to approval by county council.
And, yeah, we want to work in tandem with them.
So maybe first we'll be setting that into motion.
In motion.
Yeah, that process.
That sound reasonable?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Great. We did have an email cross your desk in regards to a resolution out of, with Casasco County, in regards to the Second Amendment. Probably won't have any discussion on it today, but we do want to do it possibly when Kevin is back, which would be our May meeting, so. It kind of overlaps and just reiterates what we've already agreed to and kind of, you know, our commitment to the county and our office, we hope, so we'll bring that up at our May, Monday May meeting, so, third, I believe, is, so.
Do we want to look out for some just open discussion casing or also?
Yeah, I'm going to do that now, so. Jesse, do you have anything to bring up?
Nope.
Audience, this is your opportunity. Any opening, this is your opening for comments. Glad to see you back. Way on, you too.
I was going to say, maybe 12, 13 months.
So, great. Hearing nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
You are finished. Thank you, everyone.